Call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Plattville for Tuesday, May 9, 2017, and we'll start with roll call.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Catherine Westerby?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Don Francis?
Here.
The first item this evening is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you prefer separate discussion and action. Council minutes from the April 25, 2017, regular meeting, also in the packet, payment of bills, the financial report for April, appointments to boards and commissions this evening. I have two appointments, the Historic Preservation Commission, Tammy Black is being reappointed, and William Kramer will be the other person appointed to the two, three-year terms. We do have vacancies on the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee, so if you're interested in that particular one, please fill out an application. They're available online at plattville.org. And also, the Board of Appeals, ET zoning and Historic Preservation Commission alternate. Next is licenses, one-year and two-year operator license to sell and serve alcohol, reserve Class B combination beer and liquor to Tina Jarrett from Fenimore for premises at 75 North Second Street, otherwise known as the City Bar. And the last thing is a proclamation for Creative Economy Week, which is May 13 through the 20th. And what we're saying with this proclamation is that the arts is another way to promote economic development in our communities. We recognize that it's an investment in creative economy development, creative placemaking, and civic engagement through the arts and creativity, and it's important to the health and vibrancy of our communities and our future. So whereas the City of Plattville appreciates the creative economy development and community cultural engagement are directly related to economic vitality and education for the 21st century, results in engaged citizens, and contributes to communities' vibrancy and success, we are issuing this proclamation this evening. I would mention that certainly in our own community, things that immediately come to mind are the museum, wonderful things that are happening there, the Roundtree Gallery, which is partnering especially with the library to exhibit and hold classes. We have the Roundtree Stone Cottage, which is a very wonderful place to visit. And also, the Chamber of Commerce and the Main Street Program are vital to our creative economy. I'd also say we have some of the most fantastic bicycle racks in the country. Thank you, bicycle racks and trails, that's also true, very creative. All right. I'm sure that other people can think of other things, those are the things that came to mind, so is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second, and we'll vote.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next we have citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. Gary Prohaska has asked to speak.
Gary Prohaska, I live at 280 Division Street here in Plattville. This is more information. First, I did attend the conference, the WAC conference. Anyway, I've got a booklet that I had sent down. It's standards for rehabilitation, and this is the guidelines that the Preservation Commission uses. This isn't like the complete, this is annotated, doesn't have the pictures in it and all that stuff, so it gets quite involved. But anyway, I figured as an education process to see what we operate under, that this is the guidelines that we use. And so when you, let's say, review a project, somebody brings something to you, this is why the statement is to, let's say, turn something down, comes from. In other words, it's not just anything else, we go by the standards. And this is national standards also, so it's adopted pretty well all the way across the country. The second bit of information that I wanted is more concerning the Gates Hotel. I know it's in the process and stuff like that on a Section 106. The Preservation Commission has asked that we be kept in the loop and receive information, both emailed or written to other parties. We checked at the WAPAC meeting, and as a government entity, we're able to get access to this, but we did formally request it at the last meeting. Of course, you won't know that because the minutes aren't out yet, but I just wanted to let you know those two bits of information. So as this thing processes down the line on the Gates Hotel, then the information would also go to the commission members. Thank you.
Thank you. The other person that's asked to speak is Luke Peters on the Fourth of July Donut fundraiser.
Yes, Luke Peters, and I'm here today to talk about our Fourth of July event. As many of you may know or may not know, the Fourth of July in Plattville, the fireworks are a volunteer-run organization, and we rely on volunteer funding. And I'm happy to follow the creative economy to announce that we will once again doing our Dunkin' Donuts delivery to help pay for fireworks. These forms, order forms are available at City Hall, The Chamber, Queen Bee Radio, and Dunkin' Donuts will have some as well. Basically, for every dozen donuts that are purchased, $5 go towards the fireworks fund. Costs a lot of money to put on fireworks, so we hope that you're all very hungry for donuts, and we'll pick a lot of them up. This will be one of our first fundraisers, but we also take checks which can be made out to the City of Plattville, and they go just put in the notation box fireworks fund. So we hope to see everyone at the event and hope to see you while we're delivering donuts on May 26. So check out, pick up an order form and order your donuts.
Thank you. We also have a comment from our city manager. Introduction?
Yes, we have a special guest with us tonight, and I'm going to ask her to come up and introduce herself, but it's Kate Coisel. Hopefully, that's close. She's a new economic development specialist with Southwest Regional Planning, and in that role, she also will be serving as the executive director of the Plattville Incubator.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
I'm pleased to be here this evening, thank you so much. I've been a fine resident of Plattville now for three weeks, and it's going quite well. A very warm reception, and I have many years of marketing, business development, and entrepreneur working relationships from across the country, which I hope to bring to benefit the region. So thank you for the opportunity, and I welcome any questions at any time about economic development work that we'll be doing or anything going on up at the incubator. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next in our agenda, the reports that are in our packet, Water and Sewer Commission, Killian?
No addition.
Museum Board? I think it's Barb, right?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything, okay. All right.
Amy at the time.
Housing Authority Board, Killian?
No addition.
Plan Commission, Nichols or Stockhausen? I have no additions.
Nothing.
Historic Preservation Commission, Killian?
No addition.
All right. Other reports in our packet, the City Attorney Itemized Report for April, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for April, and also the April Airport Financial Report. Also, Department Progress Reports, and the 2016 Tax Incremental Financing District Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those? All right, hearing none. We'll go on to our first action item, which is Resolution 1714, awarding the sale of $1,395,000 general obligation, street improvement bonds. And Dawn, I think, would be...
Right, just a little brief. So the City of Plattville had our seal for our 2017 borrowing today, so I'd like to invite Don Gunderson from Ellers and Associates to come up and give details about the sale.
Thank you, and good evening. Handled out two documents to you this evening. One is a resolution entitled Resolution Awarding Sale of $1,375,000 General Obligation Street Improvement Bonds. This resolution was prepared this afternoon by your bond attorney. It is an updated version of the one that was in your packet. It includes the results of today's sale with the winning bidder, and it is the one that you should consider for action, and the reason being is the dollar amount has been reduced from what was on your agenda, so I wanted to make that known to you. The second document is the Sale Day Report, and at our meeting a month ago, you authorized us to proceed with the competitive bond sale and the issuance of general obligation bonds for your street improvements, and that authorization was for the $1,395,000. This morning, well, between that meeting and now, we prepared an official bond document that was distributed to all regional and national underwriters and local banks, and we actually held a rating conversation with Standard and Poor's to have the issue rated, and this morning, we accepted competitive bids on the sale. So this document on page two, at 10 o'clock, we received bids from four underwriters, and the winning bid is always based upon the low bid. Bach Financial Securities out of Milwaukee was our low bidder, and their true interest cost, or TIC, was 2.9095%. Our planning estimates that we had presented to you were at 3.19, so this is an improvement to what our estimate was at planning. Our high bid was at 3.03%, or a difference of about $19,000. So what I'm going to do is skip ahead to page three. This is the bid tabulation. It lists for you the four bids that we did receive. Again, Bach was the winning bid. The far-right column is that TIC, or True Interest Rate, that is the determination for the winning bid. I might point out that these bids were, the bid included term bonds, where they termed up several maturities into larger blocks, which require mandatory redemption. So there will be an engagement of a paying agent for purposes of making those mandatory redemptions, and that is incorporated in the initial cost in here, and then the ongoing obligation for the city to pay. It's a minor, it's kind of an insurance policy to ensure that that is taking place. But the second bid then on page four is Northland Securities Bankers' Bank, Northland out of Minneapolis, Bankers' Bank out of Madison, and Baird out of Milwaukee were the three other bids that we received. On page six of this document, we'll give you the comparison between our planning estimates for sizing and our final. So some of our issuance costs came in lower than estimated, and we had an underwriter premium, which is used for two purposes, one to cover the discount expense that the underwriter charges to place the bonds, and also, there's an additional amount that will be incorporated in your debt service fund, and I'll show you how that is built into this. But as a result of the bids, we were able to reduce the amount of borrowing by 20,000, still accomplishing everything you want to do with your capital program for this year, but with less principal being borrowed and outstanding. On page seven is the estimate of the tax rate impact of incorporating this. This schedule should look familiar from some of the efforts we've done with our long-range planning. It is budget year on the far left, our projections for tax base and growth in the tax base, your current outstanding principal and interest payment, any offsetting revenues that are available, and the projected debt service levy prior to this issue. This issue, then, you'll see that our principal amount is 20,000 less than our planning estimates, our interest is 17,000 less, and in addition to that, we had $13,360 that will go into our debt service fund for that first year's interest payment. So as a meeting we had earlier, we talked about the impact of this borrowing being about 51,000 on next year's levy. With that, the actual results, that is up 49,000 with this debt service reserve, that impact is 36,000 for next year, so I mentioned that this would be more favorable than what we looked at earlier, so that is a positive in terms of your 2018 budget with today's sales results. As I mentioned, we held a rating discussion with Standard and Poor's. That rating report is attached. If you have not had an opportunity to review this before, you should take the time to read it. Talks significantly about the credit quality of the city, and I think it's meaningful to all of you to have an understanding of that. And the very last page of this document is just to kind of give you a reflection of where interest rates have been. This is a five-year municipal bond indices trend. We actually have seen some uptick in interest rates since July of 2016, but as you can see by this chart, the line that kind of cuts through the middle is what the average rates have been over that last five-year period. So today's market rates are probably pretty close to right in the middle of the average over the last five years, so, and where they were probably in July of 2015. So I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have. I think it's a good outcome for the sale, and I always am happy to come with news that it's better than we had originally estimated it might come out, so.
Questions or comments, anyone? All right. As you said, we had a work session before, and so we've been discussing some of the financial aspects of our budget, so this is something that we've seen before, not the exact document here, because that was sent out to us earlier this week. So as Dawn noted, it is $1,375,000, so the motion would be in order.
So I'll move, adopting the resolution as provided in tonight after the sale of the, after the proceeds of the sale, or after the knowledge of the sale.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 1714 for $1,375,000, and we'll vote.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Let me just, I'm going to just step away a minute, but I will announce this. The next subject matter, I need to sign a document here for this loan, so Noelwood Park, low-mow transition, Luke?
Yes. So today, we're once again talking about transitioning Noelwood Park, the mowed turf grass area, into a lower maintenance type of grass. The type of grass we're proposing is considered a no-mow. However, we are advising that we do mow it twice a year to keep it closer to the look of existing turf grass. We have explored other options, including prairie, however, given the area, we wanted to choose an option that represented the lowest amount of change for the neighborhood. With this transition, we are estimating a savings of roughly $2,000 annually. About half of that is encompassed in 90 hours of staff time, with the other coming from gas, oil, and a reduction in wear and tear on our mowers. So with that, we're looking for your feedback.
Anyone have questions or comments on this? We, again, discussed this last time, but thank you for the additional update. So is there a motion?
I make a motion that the staff be enabled to proceed with a transition to low-mow grass mix for Noelwood Park, and perhaps even others, as they bring them forward.
I'll second.
Second, all right. Motion and a second?
We'll vote. Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, those are the two action items. We have information and discussion. The first one is letter of intent with Plattville Area Senior Services.
John Meidinger, Senior Center Manager, just here to add some information to the staff report regarding the letter of intent between the City of Plattville and an organization called Plattville Area Senior Services. As you know, the Senior Center is entering into a highly collaborative partnership with a number of different organizations in an effort to sustain and improve and really reinvent senior services in the Plattville area. Those partners include the school district, the city, of course, the county, primarily via the Aging and Disability Resource Center, and then the community at large, in part through this new organization, Plattville Area Senior Services, or PASS. PASS will serve as the fundraising arm for the center and will augment the operating capital of the center. A bit about PASS, I've been invited to a few of their organizational meetings, and would just like to note that a couple things stood out to me. The first one is really their insistence on having, what's the phrase, skin in the game. I think they really want to take on some serious responsibility for the success of this endeavor. And then the second thing would be that I see PASS as being the primary channel through which probably our most important collaborator, the public, will have a significant and proactive voice and opportunity to shape the direction of this endeavor. Let's see. I think, you know, at least in part, by recognizing the dedication of the PASS members, this letter of intent was written and reviewed and revised and approved by the PASS members. They are very happy with it. It really serves to clarify the relationship between the city and PASS, define roles, sort of articulate, I think, expectations, and lay out the responsibilities of the respective parties. This should be noted that, given the collaborative and grassroots nature of this endeavor, it is a, you know, dynamic document that will likely need some modification in the future, but I see those modifications probably as to the letter of the letter, not to the spirit of the letter, if that makes sense. So if there's any questions, concerns about the letter of intent, I'm happy to address those. Actually, yes, and for, you know, a big part of this is the OE Gray, the move to OE Gray, potential move to OE Gray. PASS has expressed a strong desire to be responsibility for the rental payments to the school district, and I know that is their goal moving forward and the expectation that we have.
Anybody have any questions?
How are the non, the persons that do not live in the city, how are they financing this? Are they contributing, or are they...
That remains to be seen. I know it is the goal of the PASS members and their organization to incorporate, solicit more activity at this new iteration of the center from people in the surrounding areas. How that will be financed, I don't know. That'll, I think, remain to be seen, whether it's a fee structure of some sort, something back and forth there. And I would say one of our existing partnerships is with the ADRC, which is a county-run organization. They currently provide two days of transportation to the center, or reimburse us for one and provide one day of transportation.
Okay. Well, you know, there always was an issue that people from surrounding communities could use our facility at no cost.
Yes, yes.
And that was a problem.
Absolutely, yeah. And I think that's something that one way or another will be addressed. How exactly that's going to play out, I can't begin to guess, but I know that there's been talk, at least thus far, about addressing that in a way that's fair to all parties involved.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I have a couple. Under guiding principles, it says the existing senior center has served a relatively narrow population of seniors. And at one of the meetings, you said you were going to make it more of a community center. Is that still part of the goal?
Absolutely. You know, inclusive of seniors, focused on seniors, but not exclusive to seniors. That's almost, I think, in this day and age, self-defeating, to exclude the other demographics. You know, why not include everybody while keeping the service focused on doing those, serving those older members of our community?
The next one is the existing senior center is the only center dedicated to seniors within the 30-mile radius within Wisconsin. Is that meant to be a positive statement or a negative statement about the center?
Positive, in terms of drawing power. There's a senior center in Bosco Bell and a senior center in Monroe. We are the only senior center south of Bosco Bell, and what is that, west of Monroe. We hope to be able to draw from a significant area, significant radius around Plattville.
And you have underneath the center operations, PASS may provide funding to the city to supplement staff hours. So that's a May situation.
It is certainly their intent. Some of that, at least in future years, will be relying on their fundraising capabilities.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you very much.
I would actually just add one comment in the, just to clarify or add to what John had said earlier, in that we're anticipating that we're going to need to tweak this language as we move along, and possibly even the agreement with the school district would be tweaked slightly, and so we're asking for the council to give us authorization at the staff level to go ahead and make those changes without necessarily having to bring it back each time for council review.
I, you know, I'm personally comfortable with that. I think that it's a pretty comprehensive document already, but I agree, there could be tweaks, just in some of the things that need to be done. All right, thank you. Next item is information on planned unit development at 455 Broadway.
Okay, the property at 455 Broadway currently contains a single-family home that's used as rental property. The owner of that property has submitted a request to allow the construction of two duplexes on that property. He would remove the existing single-family home, construct it in phases, but it'd be two duplexes, shared parking and driveway. Since there's two principal structures on one lot, he needs to go through the plan unit development or variance process. This is pretty standard, I think, construction as far as the duplexes that you've probably seen in the city before, three-bedroom units, about 2,000 square foot per building, one-story, no basement. This did go to the Plan Commission for their review. They did recommend denial. Staff also is recommending denial. I think generally, the consensus was it was trying to fit too much on that size property, didn't have enough lot frontage, didn't have enough lot area. The setbacks weren't all met as far as the base zoning requirements, so it was felt that the city was giving up a lot of regulations, so to speak, without getting much in return. So the recommendation is for denial of that request. That will be a public hearing at your next meeting. Questions?
I have a question. It's about your recollection. Jack Key had some apartments up at Jackson Street. You recall those at all? Were those duplexes hooked together?
Those were...
Were those lots substandard?
That was a duplex development. I think there were three duplexes on one lot with a shared driveway. Yes, I do recall that one.
But I think he sold off.
He ended up doing, turning that into a condominium situation. Sold off, or at least attempted to sell off the buildings individually.
Well, I'm just asking you whether those lots were full-size.
That was a much larger lot. I think individually, each lot probably was large enough for a duplex, but it had limited frontage. It was a narrow and very deep lot that he was working on, so that was the only way to accommodate that development.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. Next is the proposed action plan, Community Safe Routes Committee, bikeway.
Yes. We have Dr. Christina Fields, chairperson of the Community Safe Routes Committee. We have Dr. Christina Fields, chairperson of the Community Safe Routes Committee, and she's going to give you a presentation on what the Safe Routes Committee has been doing and what her next steps are being recommended.
All right. I think we have a presentation in the back of the room, folks.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. Last year, the common council approved a plan for cycling infrastructure within the city. And then we said that we would come back and give you an update on what we've been thinking of doing. And we've come up with the idea of having a loop bike way in Plattville. And we'd like to present that to you so that you're kind of aware of what we're proposing. So to give you just a quick update on what the Community Safe Routes Committee is, we are a committee within the city and our task, I have to read mine because I can't read them, is the mission and purpose of our committee is to formulate a plan that includes safe routes for cyclists and pedestrians to access our schools and churches, parks and recreation areas, and retail shopping. The committee seeks to formulate a well-organized and interconnected community-wide bike and pedestrian system. And so our committee is made up of seven community members. And the neat thing about the committee is we're pretty diverse in that we span a neat background. So I come from the university side. There is a representative from the Plattville School District, since we're connecting people to their schools as well. We have a business, a couple of people on our committee from the business area. We have people from, just our citizens who are within the community. Then we work with the community arboretum, who are the folks that helped put together the MPO trail, the trail system, project in Plattville. And certainly, there's always a representative from council also, and we have appreciated your feedback. And then we also have liaisons, Howard and Luke and Joe, also our liaisons to our committee. And so just to tell you my motivation, I've been on the Community Safe Routes Committee for a long time. And it's because it's my passion and I really feel strongly about it. I put a picture of my children in the upper right-hand corner. They would cringe if they knew that was on there. That was when they were about three and four or five. And my son's currently a freshman. For those of you who have met him, you'd be surprised at how old he is, right? But they're the reason that I do this, because these are, these kids represent all kids who can't come to council and ask for bike facilities and safe walking. It's just not possible, right? They go to bed at this time, their parents are with them. They can't come ask for this type of infrastructure. So it's really important that there's a committee within communities that looks to provide safe biking and pedestrian infrastructure, specifically in this case for kids, but also our community is tasked, for the entire community as well, spanning the ages, to be inclusive, to think about what we've just been hearing. We are the group that worked together with the community to create the Safe Routes to School Plan. That is a specific federal program looking at connecting residences to schools for K-8. And so back in 2008, the community worked together to have that plan passed. And we've been working at etching away at that plan. The council has also been involved in curriculum with biking and walking within Plattville as well. The picture on the lower right is something we did during the Safe Routes to School Plan. Some of you were there. And we, the students did a civics plan and understood what the common council did and how that impacted kind of their lives as well. And then they did a walking school bus with us. So I'm here today to propose. Hold on. We'll hope for the best. Oh, I see it. I think we're going to make it. Do I point at the computer? No. There's lights on. I can just tell you when to, if you want to.
I can advance it.
That'd be fine.
Luca.
Yeah. Okay, you can switch. So in front of you is a map that shows specifically one, a loop system that our Community Safe Routes Committee worked together to designate. So as you know, we have a great new trail in the southern part of Plattville. And our committee thought it would be a nice opportunity to have an on-street system that connected people to that trail. And then at the same time, because our city is of a very small size, we can also connect to the schools. Those are the places shown with the red dots. And then the parks, the pool, the library downtown. And so it really gives a nice opportunity to connect all those things together. And so we came up with the idea of this loop. It's about seven miles. I've ridden it several times. It's a really nice route. So if you look at the southern part of the loop that's green, that's anything in dash is existing. And so the MPO trails is on the south side of the map. And then, then the different colors represent different pieces of infrastructure of how we could put in this bike way. And that's what I'm going to kind of present to you today. You can advance. And so the, I've talked a little bit about the background already. Our job really is to connect people with places and to do it in non-motorized fashion for everybody of all ages. And one of the challenges with, with some of the roads within our city is that they also don't have sidewalks. And that's a challenge if you're a three-year-old learning to ride a bicycle, which you really don't want to do on a road, a busy street. It's also a challenge if you are in a wheelchair or if you are having a walker. One in four people use some type of mobility device. And so if you need to do rehab or if you're in that permanently or even temporarily, sidewalks provide a really good benefit for that as well. So there's kind of a dual benefit to the bike way that we're proposing because there are some streets such as Camp that have a decent amount of traffic volume. The speeds are relatively high. It's within a residential neighborhood, but it doesn't have any sidewalks. And so by providing a potential bike way on this roadway, it allows us to also provide pedestrian facilities as well. And I'll explain that as we go forward. Just looking at the demographics in Plattville, if you look at the census, ages 19 and under, we have about 27% of that population. It estimates that 15 and under, about 10% of those people, of course, don't drive. Then the other, in the other direction, the percent of people over 60 is 13%. So we potentially have 40% of the community of Plattville that may not drive or are close to the point where they may or may not drive. You can advance. The challenge here is that we are using on-street facilities. And so there's the potential for a conflict between a pedestrian or cyclist and a motor vehicle. And so the two, when they conflict, we know which one's going to win. And so there is research done on crashes between the two. And the, this is a study that the different colored lines just represent four different studies where they looked at fatalities at different speeds. And if you average the four studies, if you were hit by a car at 30 miles an hour, so that would be faster than what's on our local street, but probably a pretty common range of speeds that you'd find on, let's say, Camp Street. The average of 10% of people would about get killed if you were hit by a car at 30 miles an hour. Just increasing to 40 miles an hour, it jumps by four times. So 40% of the people would get killed if hit by a car going 40 miles an hour. So in that small spread of speed, it's four times more dangerous to get hit by a motorized vehicle. So I do want you to keep that in mind, that providing a bike way can help designate spaces and that can help separate users to some extent. And so that might help make our community a bit safer. You can advance. So as a committee, we've taken a lot of time to look at the city streets that we are thinking of putting the bike ways on. We are not proposing new pavement of any sort. We're looking at using the existing roadway, because we know we need to be conservative because we know finances are difficult for all cities. And so we're utilizing existing facilities and we're modifying, or proposing modifying some of them. So we're using an existing MPO trail. We have existing bike lanes on Ridge Avenue. We're proposing some places having additional bike lanes. And those can also benefit walkers on the places, on the streets where there is an existing sidewalk, you can walk in the bike path. We have charos downtown, so we have proposed some of the streets to have charos. And then we are proposing in a few locations where we use a sidewalk as kind of a temporary version of a trail. You can advance. So this is the loop. I'll just go around just the city really quickly. I won't talk about the specific designations for each section because you can see it on your map. So if we were to start over by Westview, maybe where Main Street hits Westview, or excuse me, Main Street hits Western, you would go north on Western, go up to Camp, over to Camp, up, then, I'll just take the loop up and over, up Holman, over to, and someone's going to have to help me exactly on those names, Mason and.
Eastman.
Eastman. Then that brings us, after you cross Lancaster, would be Ridge Avenue. That's where the existing bike lanes are. Taking the bike lanes then all the way down, over to Fourth, Fourth down to Madison, Madison over to Water. There's a trail on Water that we could go up to Fairfield and then Fairfield over to the trail system that goes through Mount View and then wraps down and around through the MPO trail. And then back over west, over to campus, and then through Memorial Park and up through campus. And then potentially then down Greenwood and College Avenue and Main Street. Now, there are some other connections in there. So I've put the connection on Camp Street as one, and then there's a connection all the way through downtown as well to connect people with downtown. We think that's important. And so that's kind of the idea of the loop. So it would be about seven, seven miles. It would connect residences to the trail, to the schools, to the library, to downtown, to the churches. And so that's the proposal. So now I can go into a little bit more detail about the types of infrastructure. So charos are, the idea with a charo is the paint designation on the street. It's a little hard to see on the slide, but on, this is Main Street, the photo is Main Street, and the blue circle is outlining the charo. It's paint on the street. It looks like the photo that you see on the left. And so the idea with the charo is that it's a road marking that tells motorists to expect bicycles to be there. It's specifically used in downtown because the speed of the bike downtown matches really the speed of the car in that setting. There isn't extra width downtown to put something like a bike lane in because there's travel lanes, as you know, and then there's the parking lane. So by moving the cyclist just into the driving lanes that are going to be using, going the same speed anyways, it's a safer position for a bike to be in. It's away from the door that could be opening of a parked vehicle. And it's alerting drivers that it's fine for cyclists to be there. So the match of putting charos on Main Street is a really good match. And so that's why we use charos. So if you could advance. So on the map, if you look at the blue, we're proposing charos in other locations around the community. And we really, really spent some, a lot of time looking at the width of all the streets, trying to understand how much on-street parking occurs on those streets because we know that that's valuable, but then balancing that with providing safe biking infrastructure for the community. And so the blue are the ones where we're designating. So while we were going through this process, and so we created a cost estimate by looking at the cost of the charos from downtown, so we could use that information. And if you follow the standards for installing charos, the cost per mile, which we don't necessarily have a mile, but if you broke it down that far, is about $10,500 for a mile of charos, so the paint designation on the street. And so, because we knew you'd be interested in how much all of this would cost. And so if, so you can see where it's blue designated, those are our suggestions about where to put charos. The traffic then is just alerted that the bike's going to share the road in those locations. The cross-section on the lower right just is a sketch showing what the charos end up looking like. And in some cases, like downtown, there's parking on both sides of the street. Depending on the location that you look at on your map, parking is, at least one lane of on-street parking can be provided on all the routes that we have proposed the charos on. You can advance. Okay, so the next type of cycling infrastructure are bicycle lanes. And our example that we have in Plattville, the bike lanes that were installed about a year ago on Ridge Avenue. And so they designate a designated, or they designate a space specifically for bicycles. And it separates the drivers from the bicycles and that helps kind of reduce the conflict. Everybody in this case knows where they can be. The reason we can put bike lanes on a Ridge Avenue that we couldn't downtown is because of the width of the street, there's extra room. And so for Ridge, we, bike lanes always will go on both sides of the street if it's a two-way road because bikes are legally required to follow the rules of the road, just like a motorized vehicle. So there would always be bike lanes in each direction. And then on Ridge, we worked with the neighborhood and determined that we would put, there was enough room for on-street parking. So we designated the south side of Ridge is where the parking went. In talking to some of the residents on Ridge, the lower left-hand picture is a resident of Ridge, and he is really thankful for the bike lanes on Ridge. You can see he has his bike trailer and he pulls his kids and he gives, it says it gives him a level of comfort now when he's riding on there, that he has a designated space that the cars know that he's supposed to be there. And, and the nice thing for Ridge as well, Ridge doesn't have sidewalks. And so it also provides a place for people who want to walk on Ridge, and there's a lot of people who do so. So that's a little bit about bike lanes. You can advance. So on your map, the yellow solid lines are the locations where we're proposing bike lanes. And we've looked at the width of those roads. We're able to provide at least one lane of on-street parking on all of those roads. And the dashed is just representing Ridge where the existing bike lanes are. We did the cost analysis of bike lanes per mile using the estimate from Ridge Avenue, and it comes out to 11,500. It's a little more because there's signs involved and in charos there aren't. And so if we look at the cost of putting bike lanes on all the proposed yellow routes, it would come up to about $29,000. You can, you can advance. Then there are some locations where we feel that the traffic volumes are high, that providing on-street parking is, or the demand for on-street parking is pretty high, that we didn't necessarily feel with the existing street width that we could propose putting bike lanes or charos. And so two such locations would be in front of the pool and in front of Legion Field. So if you go there in the summer, a lot of vehicles are parked on both sides of the road. I don't necessarily feel comfortable, I probably do now, but my kids are older, having them bike in the road. But if they were younger, I would certainly put them on the sidewalk. The sidewalks adjacent to the pool and on Legion are a little wider than our normal sidewalks. And so we, in this case, decided to recommend that people bike on the sidewalk along the pool and along Legion Park. And, and in the future, what would be great is if we were to reconstruct Sylvia and Pitt, that that street width, or because the city owns the property by the pool and Legion, that we could put a multi-use trail in that would be similar to like what you might have on Water Street. And then it would be a little bit wider because there's a lot of pedestrian and bicycle use along this corridor. And so that would be kind of the dream in the future. You can advance. So that's, that's the idea that we've had. We've really taken time and thought through the different options that we would have at the different streets. We like the idea of the loop because, I don't know, it's kind of nice to not go home in a different way than you came. And it connects people to really a lot of Plattville. So laying out what the plan is, how we could move forward is, I'm here just explaining what we are proposing for. what we are proposing for the bike way. We propose that there'd be a public meeting to communicate with the public about the bike way, and then we would return to the council with the results of what happened at the meeting, and then look for a recommendation from you, and then move forward at implementation. So today I'm not asking for you to, that we're going to follow this exact plan, this would be the one that I say we've spent a lot of time on, and it, I think that the choices that we've made as far as charos, bike lanes, or using the sidewalk are pretty good choices, and so I guess I would, I just wanted to educate you and kind of make sure you were aware of what we would like to move forward with, with the community in proposing this bike way. And you can advance. As a recommendation, because this bike way is a community bike way, I feel that one community meeting would allow the community to benefit from the bike way. My concern is that a neighborhood is going to say no, and then the loop idea can't happen. These are public streets and they provide public benefit, and I really feel that the people who go through my neighborhood and drive through there, they don't live in my, necessarily live in my neighborhood either, but they use the infrastructure, and when I want to go on this loop bike way, it'd be nice to provide these designated spaces for people throughout the entire community. It benefits everybody of all ages. So I like, I like the idea of having one meeting and getting the feedback that way, and then, of course, it would be great if we could just do the whole thing at one time for implementation, but I realize that that could be difficult, too. And so, what I've done is given you my recommendation on how could we do this in smaller chunks? And so, the chunk being maybe around 5,000. It's tricky, because it's a loop, so how do you break it in chunks? It doesn't really make sense, but I, I realize the importance of having, having to do it in small pieces. So I selected Camp Street because, between Lancaster and Fourth, because there are no sidewalks on that street. The traffic speed is relatively high, and having designated spaces is important. There isn't a walking school bus, so what that means is a group of students and their parents walk to Westview, to school, to and from school together as a group, and they walk on that route, and, and the people in that neighborhood who I know who have children are excited that there might be designated spaces for people to bike and walk on Camp Street. So that's why I chose it. The, the next one that I selected was the one on Fourth Avenue. This would connect with the Ridge bike lanes. I know that when we worked with the public for the Ridge project, it was important that we connect Ridge to something, and so it's hard for me not to recommend that particular one first, but because there's sidewalks on Fourth, it's, I think that putting the bike lanes on Camp kind of trumps that. And so, but this would allow the connection then from Ridge down to the middle school. There's a lot of walking activity between Westview and the middle school, they walk back and forth for their field trips, and so that would benefit them. Then, the next one I proposed was the other side of Camp Street, and then looking at connecting the middle school to the high school with charos on Madison. The reason I put charos on Madison was just the street width is, is narrow and there's on-street parking, and so that's why I did that one. So that's just a, an idea of how we could potentially move forward with the bike way. So I would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions, anyone?
I don't have a question, but this is really great that you guys have taken a couple, it's probably been a couple of years that you've been working on this, but this is really great in that you've laid it out, how we could approach it.
Yeah, thanks.
I have to comment that what you're doing is really important for the city as a whole, because what it's doing is laying a foundation for younger families, professionals that enjoy biking, to come into the community and be able to see what we have to offer. So, I really think this is a good idea, and I appreciate you working on it. Thank you.
Other comments?
Well, Christine, we go back a long time on this.
You're on the picture.
I was on the picture, right? I was on the picture, we go back a long time, and, you know, I, I can't, I, Tom, I echo what you said. This is incredibly important as we look to the future for our community. This may not be something that I'm gonna take my bicycle on, although I might, who knows? But I think the fact that we can, that we show that we are open, that we are welcome, that we provide these types of opportunities, I mean, I can remember a lot of people speaking, talking about how, how this MPO trail, no one was ever gonna walk on it. I remember people saying, "We're gonna have a dog park, there's never gonna be a dog in it." I'm sorry, but never is a long time, and you, you really have to look hard not to see a dog in a dog park, and you really have to go a long time not, I mean, you have to be in the middle of the night not to see people on these trails. So I, I really support this and hope we can figure out a way to move forward.
Thank you.
So I assume that the next step is for you to continue to work with staff and try to have a community meeting.
Community meeting.
If it's possible to have more than one, I might suggest that, simply because we're coming into the summertime and a lot of people are gone during the summer, and you might not catch some people that you would if you-
Could do it time of day.
Maybe in the fall?
Okay.
Couple times a day.
All right, but thank you, this is very comprehensive.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes information discussion. Unless anybody else has anything else to say?
Also move, we adjourn?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn, we'll vote.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Westerby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Francis?